Checking in with staff, are we all ready to go? Alright. I call this Committee of the Whole Meeting Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, to order Cheche Hochklam and Kaimu Asna Teegijje. That's my attempt to give a land acknowledgement in Ayajuthum, the original language of this land, and share appreciation for stewardship over these lands by Klam and people since time immemorial. First item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Staff, are there any last-minute changes that you need to the agenda?
Nope.
Alright, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Councillor Palm, do I have a second or councillor Almeida? Any discussion? Seeing none? You have an item?
Just a comment for those that are watching today as we have a slightly modified agenda. We'll notice, members of the public will notice, we have two separate delegations. It's 5.1, the delegation couldn't make it at an earlier time, so staff worked them to arrange the schedule accordingly. So we have a delegation, a report, and then a delegation again. So a little different than normal weeks.
Thank you councillor Almeida. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Next item, adoption of the minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held January 21st, 2025? Councillor Southcott and a second or councillor Elliott? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Councillor Dout, are you opposed or just a little bit of a lag?
A little bit late.
Okay, so passed unanimously. Onto item 3.1, delegations. Mr. Barr regarding bus lay-by station follow-up. Is Mr. Barr here? Oh, right there, sorry. On the screen, welcome, Mr. Barr. So the way that delegations work currently is you have 10 minutes. You don't need to use the full 10 minutes. And at the end of those 10 minutes, we may have questions for you, questions for staff. But usually, we are here to listen to your delegation. Thank you.
Fair enough. Am I on?
You are on.
Very good. Well, thank you. Welcome, your worship, the mayor, honourable counsel. For those who don't know me, I'm Jack Barr, president of Powell River Town Centre, among other entities, and thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I come to you, counsel, with what I believe to be a simple request, or two. You've previously read the letter to Mayor and Council of August 12th, 2024. And I had hoped to actually be there today in Powell River, but unfortunately, the planes weren't flying. And I was at the airport not just like just over an hour ago and didn't make it. So anyways, I'm here and glad I was able to make it this way. So but as I say, you've read the letter. I'm not going to take your valuable time to review the letter. You've all had a chance to see it. Since that time and the letter, however, I'm pleased to see that one of the items addressed in it had been approved and that the bus shelters are in fact slated to be installed this spring, which is good. What hasn't been addressed, though, is the fact that for a year, I've simply asked to whom I can sit down with and discuss the cost-sharing of municipal infrastructure for the entire bus lay-by at the mall, the possibility of supplying the drivers with a dedicated restroom facilities, and how we hash out a formal agreement for the operation and upkeep of the space, which for the past 25 years has been basically on a handshake agreement, but quite frankly, needs to be properly addressed at this time. I appreciate that having municipal and/or federal, sorry, provincial infrastructure on private property poses certain complications, but this is all the more reason I feel it needs to be dealt with sooner than later. I further appreciate Tor Burtig's comments at the December 5th council meeting, where he stated that he would like to engage in a partnership with BC Transit as well as the mall owners to install the shelters at the exchange. But to date, I have yet to be contacted by the city, by BC Transit, or for anybody at that matter. And I fear if I didn't personally come before council, I may never get a response to my plea. Now, some might argue that maybe I should have had an agreement in place before I started the process, and maybe so. But when we first approached Transit and we started to put in the development permit and get this thing going, Transit said, yeah, they could probably have the plans done in about two years from then. I told them that this project had to be finished and moved. The bus lay-by had to be done within six months to meet the winner's timeline. So there was no time to negotiate a deal, and business can't wait that long. So I took it through my discussions with staff. I took it on good faith. Now, to this point, I'm going to go off on a tangent here a little bit. Two years ago, I started a discussion on another project. And in July of 2023, I formally put in a rezoning application for the upper portion of the Beach Gardens property to be able to build up to 200 multifamily homes in condos, duplexes, fourplexes, et cetera. And it still has not been brought before council. I'm hoping that it will before spring arrives, but I don't know. In a city that desperately needs housing and construction and work, I find it hard to believe that there isn't more of a sense of urgency.
Mr. Barr, I'll ask you, try as much as you can to focus on your desires. Sometimes it's possible to veer into critique of staff, which may, you know, be connected to your issue, but try to focus on your desires. Thank you.
And I appreciate that. And as I was going to say, I do understand the difficulties of finding staff and that City Hall has been understaffed. I guess I just feel frustrated, ignored, disrespected when I'm trying to get things done for what I feel is for the betterment of the community and that I've gone through all the appropriate channels, but I'm not getting anywhere. You know, for the past 40 years, I've flown up there. I commute to Powell River twice a month. I've served as the Chamber of Commerce president. I've served as Sunshine Coast Tourism President. I've spent 2/3 of my 60 years actively promoting Powell River and the Sunshine Coast. We've built the hotels, we've built Safeway-Freshco. We spent tens of millions of dollars, my tax bills, $1.3 million. With all things considered, to come before you and ask if I can just sit down with someone who has the authority to talk about and to entertain into discussions on sharing the cost of the municipal infrastructure along with arranging, sitting down and hashing out an agreement for the maintenance and responsibility of the space, instead of getting the runaround, it doesn't seem like a lot to ask. So I'm asking two things. If the mall didn't want the bus lay-by on its property, I'm sure the city would have to endeavor to find a place and build the infrastructure that I would assume cost it millions of dollars. It cost me $320,000 to build it, plus giving up a number of prime parking spots and that. And I'm asking the city to cost-share this of $160,000. And I'm willing to even amortize that over a license agreement period of five, 10 years, whatever. And two, who and how do we come up with a proper agreement for the use and the maintenance of it? And does the city want a designated restroom for the drivers? Because I have one sitting there, ready, willing to go. So, you know, I appreciate you, you know, and thank you for listening to my rant and my crest. And I'm happy to answer any questions, but can somebody help me out so we can get this done? I'm waiting some, there's going to be some incident on there. And I don't know who, if, you know, when we cover our butts, you know, who's responsible for the maintenance, the cleanup, the operation, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. You've raised a number of issues, and one of them clearly is the fact that it is both BC Transit and the city who are engaged at a governance level on that item. Are there any questions? We might have questions for staff or questions for the delegate. I'll start with councillor Palm and then councillor Elliott.
Thank you through the chair. Mr. Barr, it's always a pleasure to see one of the highest taxpayers of the city of Powell River in the chamber. We appreciate all that you do for our city. Don't never, I never lose sight of that, I can assure you. Your ask to me seems to be a simple one, since you have gone to great lengths to talk to staff, talk to members of our Community Forest Board, which I believe are supportive of your 50-50 cost-sharing, because that's what they're always looking for.
Councillor Palm.
Capital expense.
Councillor Palm, we don't have a motion on the floor yet to debate. So if you have any questions of clarity first, let's focus on questions of clarity.
Getting to my question, Chair. And that question, Mr. Barr, could you just explain to council what you have done in your letter, which I don't know if the public that is viewing has heard? Could you explain your response that you have gotten from our Community Forest Board in regard to your ask?
Thank you councillor Palm. Yes. In speaking with city staff, they recommended that Community Forest would be a way to go. I reached out to Community Forest, laid out the proposal, laid out the complete cost analysis and the bill from McIlhany, from outside third parties. This was not my GC or anything that was going on, this was all there. There was a short timeline. I was able to get the application in at an appropriate amount of time or just under the wire, so to speak. And I was told from the CFO of the city that it wouldn't be looked at at this point in time because it doesn't fall under the criteria. Of which, I, looking at the criteria, I happen to think that it probably does. And if you look back at the news report that was printed in the peak from 2021, Community Forest helped put in bus shelters on two municipal spots outside of Freshco in Westview. Also, it was Transit, the city, and Community Forest got together to do that. So I think this type of infrastructure, this type of community benefit falls completely under Community Forest.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Appreciate that.
Thank you. CEO Bopal Singh, did you have additional?
Through the chair and through to the delegate, I will call upon Mr. Director Burtig. But before I do, hello, Mr. Barr. I do know that you've been in contact with, I think, Jason Gao, Cam Reed, and also Director Burtig, and also some people at BC Transit. And one of the challenges we do have is as a municipality, we are not allowed to do things that are considered an aid to business. And so we try to look at how we could do things in a manner where we wouldn't be doing something that is contrary to the law for us. So that still has to be resolved. I do believe that, I'm not sure where your conversations went with BC Transit, but one nuance for council and you to realize is where we have built bus shelters, they've been on publicly-owned land. And so there is a, just some tricky pieces for us about how we work on private property. It's not insurmountable, but it means it's not straightforward. And Director Burtig, maybe you could let us know where things were left off with our manager of transportation. Thank you.
Through the chair, you have good afternoon, your worship, members of council, Mr. Barr. Yeah, with respect to the lay-down area at the mall, our initial focus has been on the shelters. And we've worked with BC Transit on the provision thereof with the aspect that we danced around in order to not provide benefit to private business. We were able to go down the road with the shelters that we could provide the shelters as they are a benefit to our transit customer base and not necessarily providing a benefit to the mall owners. With respect to the lay-down area, as that is different infrastructure that does not necessarily benefit our customers, we shied away as, with our fear of a benefit to private enterprise on private property and I guess, you know, the addition of down the road where we would have infrastructure on a private property. The only way that we could get around it is if we could be creative and perhaps look at, I don't know, a statutory right-of-way over this land if we were going to provide that infrastructure on that base. But it is not a direction that we wanted to go down the road. With respect to working on an agreement, we continue to work with BC Transit to come up with a sample agreement that we wanted to sit down with Mr. Barr and his staff members. But unfortunately, with staff capacity and some, I can express some frustration with working with BC Transit staff and perhaps their capacity at this time. We've been, yeah, we've been remiss and not been able to sit down and have a good negotiation around those items. So hopefully, that provides a little clarity.
Thank you, Mr. Burtig. Councillor Elliott and councillor Dout, did I see your hand up? To be on the list? Okay, yeah, councillor Elliott and then councillor Dout.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. A question I kind of had, and I guess it's because some assumptions I had seemed to not be true. I had thought that we would have some sort of a lease agreement or a use agreement all along. So before the upgrades were made, did we not, through BC Transit, or somebody pay for the use of the space being used for the bus exchange in some way?
Never. I would say, I'm going to say about 25 years ago, my father made an arrangement with BC Transit at that time to try and get all of the buses meet in one location, and that was at the north end of the mall. And I think it worked well for a time being, but I think with what's going on there now, it's inadequate to serve the needs of the community. And I agree, it was on a handshake, it's just been operating. And the thing that really scares me, because it happens, we have snowfall as we have right now. And, you know, the mall, we look after the salting of the area. So is it now my response? I, you know, I noticed in the news, that was in the paper, that I believe it's the city is going to look after the maintenance of the shelters, and then in 10 years, it transfers to Transit or vice versa. And that's for the shelters, but the actual bus lay-by, there really needs to be, and I wouldn't call it a lease, I would probably call it a license, whether it's a right-of-way, but it's probably a licensed area to utilize the area that puts out that whether the mall owners, we will be the ones that look after salting. Because invariably, and it's happened in a number of occasions, you have snow, you have ice, somebody trips, somebody falls, and there's an injury claim that comes up. You know, invariably, one day, somebody's going to step off the bus and onto the sidewalk and twist their ankle and break their leg or sprain their leg. And they're going to come to either the mall or the city or BC Transit. And, you know, we need to have some type of understanding that is this my insurance that's covering it? Is it Transit's insurance? Is it the city's insurance? Again, the ask is, who do I sit down with? And when and how do we hash this out? Because it can't just go on forever like this. And again, it's a benefit for all. I appreciate it, it's a benefit for the mall, I think it's a great thing for the mall. But I also think that it's municipal infrastructure, and I think it's a great thing for the community to have something like this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Mister councillor Dout.
Yeah, well, thanks for coming, Mr. Barr. And it's been a question on my mind every time I drive by.
Councillor Dout, sorry to interrupt you, you're a bit quiet. And so maybe the microphone is covered up or you're a bit away from it.
Well, I'll try to yell louder. So, Mr. Barr, thanks for coming. I think you've asked actually two really simple questions. The first one is, who can you talk to at City Hall to work through this issue? I'm sure it's complicated, and there are a lot of things that need to be done. Maybe some of them should have been done 25 years ago. But I hear you asking, who can you talk to at City Hall whose responsibility will be to deal with the issue? I think that's one reasonable question. The other one is, why has it taken so long to hear from planning about your plans for Beach Gardens property? Those are two questions. And I'd like to ask staff if they have an answer for those. Should be fairly simple. Who can you talk to? And what's going on with the building issues on the Beach Gardens property?
Thank you councillor Dout. I'll pass that back to staff. Through the chair, Director Gao, as you know, is away this week.
And so, Mr. Barr, he has been in touch with you about the process and the timing. And so I think you've been apprised of that, and he's been in pretty good touch with you on that. And so we move at the pace that we're able to get the information we need from applicants. And I know that sounds like a challenge. And also staff capacity. So he's back in the office next week. I think you were advised he was away for a week. So when he returns, I think you both know each other quite well.
Is there a possibility, if I may? Because appreciating the challenges that city staff has, we have, and I don't know if it's a possibility or not, my development manager in Gibson's and other areas has been able to bring our own staff in to help write reports, to get these things done at our own cost, to assist the city. And I'm wondering, you know, we mentioned this to Mr. Gao as well, and I don't know if he was unsure if it could be done or couldn't be done or what, but we're offering our services just to try and help this get moved along.
Through the chair, Mr. Barr, I do believe that one of the pieces is independent analysis on our side. And there are some pieces of information Mr. Gao requires before he brings it forward to council. But there, actually, I will share with council, there is a draft report. So it is, I think there's just a few pieces for you and Mr. Gao to iron out, and then he will be able to wrap that up. But thank you for that kind offer. It's one that comes with a few challenges for us, but we do appreciate that you made that. And then your other point.
The other question from councillor Dout was about the key contact to have a conversation regarding the bus lay-by.
Okay, so through the chair, Mr. Barr, you have Tor Burtig, who's currently online. I think you know him well. One of our key managers is currently on a leave. And, but Mr. Burtig can help with conversations to forward that. And I do believe that you have a BC Transit contact. If I look somewhere in the emails and correspondence, who has been engaged with you. And, Mr. Burtig, you can loop that person in as appropriate. Thank you.
Further questions? I see councillor Elliott, but I'll check to see if anybody who hasn't spoken yet has a question. Okay, councillor Elliott.
I just wanted to propose a motion that we work, we have, we write a letter of response to Mr. Barr, clarifying the process with BC Transit and the city for negotiating the lay-by issues that he has.
So I'm going to stop you there, because it sounds like you're about to go into a bit of rationale. I'll look to our corporate officer staff to make sure that we've captured that. You may need to repeat yourself.
Through the chair, if I could ask Stephen Fleming to help. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I see that Jessica had started to write down the motion. If you could put that back on the screen, please.
And just to note, Mr. Fleming's voice may be new to some folks listening in. At a previous meeting, we made an announcement that Mr. Fleming has been appointed as an interim corporate officer for the city, and so is supporting us with corporate officer duties. So we have that staff be directed to write a letter of response to Mr. Barr, clarifying the relationship between BC Transit. Can you, oh, we've gone over to Mallory, let's go back to.
So I wanted to.
Yeah, I think we could get that motion back up again. And I think councillor Elliott has not quite fully captured, yeah.
Through the chair, I'll just caution, there's been some power outages in town. So if we have a few glitches here and there, just bear with us.
Yeah, we got lots of time. We'll wait.
So.
I would add that staff be directed to write a letter of response to Mr. Barr, clarifying the relationship between BC Transit and the city of Powell River with respect to the issues raised in the presentation.
Yeah, so I like it, except for the word "relationship" is not what we're trying to clarify, but rather the process for.
Yeah, I'm sorry, your worship, I would take that to include a very broad, include what are the, how that relationship works, including what the process is to move this forward.
Yeah, I just really like the word "process" better than "relationship", but thank you.
Okay.
Alright, so is that written, how you'd like to make that motion? Councillor Elliott?
That one works for me, yes.
Do we have a second or? Councillor Southcott, want to speak to that councillor Elliott? Do you want to speak to councillor Elliott or any rationale?
Sure, yes, please, thank you. So I think Mr. Barr deserves to have in writing who his contacts should be and clarification around the process that we would use to come up with an appropriate agreement for the use of the space at the mall for our city transit exchange. It seems very reasonable to me, and I'm hoping that by working with staff and BC Transit, we can come up with a letter that helps clarify those things.
Any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright. Onto the next item, which is 4.1, 2025, Five-Year Financial Plan Engagement Results.
Should we thank Mr. Barr?
Oh, yes, sorry, thank you, Mr. Barr. Sorry, you're still there. We're moving along with our business.
And thank you very much for your time as well. I'm much appreciated.
Thank you for joining us. Okay, take care. I see CAO, you have a quick comment.
Through the chair, if I might confirm, our CFO was, I think I'm okay saying, but she's actually been a bit unwell. I just need to check that due to a power outage, that she's still able to hear us. If not, we might, I might ask that we switch the order and. Ms. Denniston, perfect. Thank you so much.
Alright, it looks like CFO Denniston is online for the next item, 4.1, 2025, Five-Year Financial Plan Engagement Results. I'll pass it over to CFO Denniston.
Thank you. Good afternoon, mayor and council. First, I'll just check that you can hear me okay.
Yes, we can.
Great, wonderful, thank you. A few glitches here, but we have trouble shooting. I'm presenting the results of the 2025 budget engagement initiatives. But before we dive in, I'll give a refresher on where the city is at in the budget process and what the next steps will be. Council set the 2025 budget schedule in May, and then draft one of the budget was reported on and discussed at the Committee of the Whole Meetings on December 3rd and 17th. The property assessment analysis was reported on and discussed at the January 14th Committee of the Whole, which was following the release of the completed property assessment role. Concurrently, online engagement surveys were open in December and January as well. An in-person budget open house was hosted on January 16th. The budget engagement results being presented today were intentionally scheduled between the first three budget reports and draft two of the budget so that council could consider the budget engagement feedback before finalizing direction for draft two. The budget direction that we have so far in the budget process is summarized in Appendix A of the report. But as a quick recap, council has directed staff to increase the water user fee by 4% annually between 2025 and 2027 to request the QRD contribute the maximum funding permitted in their recreation services. uh, to request the QRD contribute the maximum funding permitted in their recreation services agreement, uh, to increase property taxes by up to $250,000 annually, so that up to $250,000 of the city's community forest revenue could be granted to NPOs, include an option to transfer $600,000 to the Property Tax Stabilization Reserve in draft two, and finally, to present options to reduce the property tax levy increase to 5% in draft two. So that's just a quick recap of where we're at in the process and, um, this is, you know, one final opportunity for council, um, to provide further direction for draft two, uh, before that is presented. Should the committee wish to provide direction today, a recommendation boarding template has been provided in the report. Now, digging into the actual survey results, the first online survey was a budget simulation where residents were presented with the draft one operating budget. Participants were given the opportunity to adjust about budget allocations across departments according to their individual priorities while maintaining the legislative requirement to balance the budget. Respondents could also provide feedback through comments. I'm happy to report that there were 104 survey submissions, which is an increase of 35 or 51%, and there were 221 comments, which is an increase of 175 or 380% over the prior year. Uh, so wonderful news to see more engagement this year over the prior year. Uh, however, despite the increase in survey responses, please keep in mind that the survey responses represent 1.1% of the city's population, so they're not considered statistically valid. The respondent profile shows that 40% of the respondents were between the ages 30 and 49 and 28% were between the ages 50 and 69. The respondent's profile as far as neighborhoods, uh, was very interesting. The chart on the screen shows that they were very close to being geographically representative with 64% of the responses from Westview, 16% from Wildwood and Townsite, and 10% from Cranberry. So that's, uh, what this survey was all about, who responded. And now we'll get into the actual results of where these respondents landed when they were balancing the budget. Um, so overall, the budget simulation proposed property and parcel tax reductions of 1.1 million. And this is a three, this is 3.6% less than what is currently reflected in draft one. So we can see that at the top here. Uh, if this total reduction applied only to property taxes, not parcel taxes as well, the 2025 property tax increase would be 6.9% rather than the 11.4% as proposed in draft one. So in order to balance the budget, several adjustments to service levels were proposed and they're shown in order of magnitude on the screen. The first was a 294,000 or 3.6% decrease to recreation parks and culture. The second was a 260,000 or 3.4% decrease to transportation. The third was a 245,000 or 2.7% decrease to protective services. Next, 134,000 or 4.6% decrease to planning and development services. And finally, a 19,000 or 1.7% decrease to solid waste pickup service. Uh, regarding the comments received, the 24% related to property taxation and parcel taxes, followed by general government services and transit services at 11% each. Uh, the survey comments are listed by category in Appendix B2 of the report. This survey, the respondents were able to opt into a subsequent survey called the Budget Prioritization Survey. Uh, this simulation allowed respondents to rank, uh, the services that they most valued. There were 52 submissions, which is an increase of 33 or 174%, and 89 comments, which is an increase of 54 or 154% over the prior year. So again, um, this survey was launched for the first time last year, so no surprise that we saw, um, an increase in engagement on this survey. All in all, the top three prioritized surveys were water, roads, and sewer, all of which are essential core services. The next highest priorities were solid waste collection, RCMP, and fire. The services with the lowest priority rankings were the fitness facility, bylaws, public meetings and engagement, campsite, museums, and meeting rooms. The comments for this survey are listed by category in Appendix C2. The city also hosted a public open house on January 16th, attended by approximately 60 residents. Um, so an increase in attendance over the prior year. Uh, Mayor and Council, along with department directors, were present to address questions and comments from attendees. Survey feedback was collected at the event and printed copies of the budget reports and other budget and property tax-related information was also provided. Most attendees filled out the online budget surveys that I've just covered, but a few also provided handwritten comments, which are summarized in Appendix D. So overall, uh, the two surveys and the open house provided council with 362 comments and a high-level guidance on service prioritization. Um, I show on the screen the picture before the event. I, I didn't want to take, show pictures that included people who attended the event, but rest assured there were, um, there was, uh, solid attendance at this event. Uh, I just thought this helped show the format and where, where the actual event took place. So for next steps, draft two of the city's 2025 Five-Year Financial Plan will be presented to council on February 27th. Draft two will consolidate all the direction received to date, including direction received at this meeting for council consideration. After this point, the financial plan bylaw would require first three readings and adoption in March. And this would leave sufficient time for the property tax rate discussions and property tax rate bylaw adoption in April. With that, I thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, CFO Denniston. Uh, we'll start with, again, questions first. Anybody want to start us off? And I can go around and, um, in clockwise order, we'll start with, uh, Counselor Elliott and then any questions, Counselor Palm, and we'll continue on.
Thank you so much, CFO Denniston. Um, my question is, do we, um, include input outside of the survey that we keep receiving on the budget in our report in any way, or is that separate?
Through the Chair, we would only include in this report the feedback that was received through the surveys. And I, I can't say to note towards staff, there being many, uh, input on the budget received outside of the survey process. We have had a lot of questions. Um, some people have vocalized their opinions, but, uh, we wouldn't go ahead and include emails or discussions outside of the survey response. But we are very clear with, uh, anyone we correspond with to, in, to, to vocalize their, their feedback formally through the survey. Um, in doing this, we ensure that we are providing, uh, publicly, uh, feedback and correspondence that the, the residents are okay being presented in a public format.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we do receive correspondence from the public and obviously that is, um, on the website and council receives copies of all of that. Um, Counselor Palm, any questions at this point?
Yes, uh, to the Chair, so, uh, I want to add a couple of things.
Um, we're focusing on questions right now, so.
Well, first of all, uh, say to the public, I really appreciate the amount of input that came forward this year as opposed to prior years of running this survey. The numbers are substantially higher than previously. So that tells me the public is engaged in what's happening at City Hall and within our city boundaries. And I greatly appreciate all of the input. I read each and every comment and, uh.
Counselor Palm, we're focusing on questions right now. If you have questions for staff.
Where we need to go. Secondly, um, the reference to 1.1% of the population not being statistically.
Counselor Palm, do you have questions? We're in question period right now. Do you have questions for staff?
Just raising a couple of key points, uh.
We'll, we'll, we'll be able to raise points when we get into discussion and debate, but we're just getting clarity from staff on anything that we need clarity on right now before we get into discussion.
I will, uh, hold on till later. Thank you.
All right, any questions? I see Counselor Dout's hand up and then we'll move on to Counselor Almeida. We're on questions right now.
Okay.
Counselor Dout, yeah, there you go.
My turn?
Yep.
Okay, I'll try to speak loudly. So I'm looking at the, uh, figure E, 1E.
Figure E, 1E.
A number of recommendations or a number of decreases in spending that are there. And then my question has two parts. The first one is, did these dollar values result from some suggestions in the survey or the recommendations from staff? And can you explain to me the impact on each of those services that those cuts would have? The property and parcel tax, for example, being reduced by a million and some dollars. Uh, what effect would that have on services? And what, and same for the other questions where reductions are proposed.
CFO Denniston, do you hear the question all right?
Yes, thank you so much, uh, through the Chair to Counselor Dout. Uh, to answer your first question, these are the results of those who filled out the survey. They're not the results of any sort of staff input. How the results work, uh, is that each person is required to balance the budget. And so, all of the dollar changes for each category are summed and then they're divided by the number of respondents. So we can arrive at these averages to find out what, uh, the proposed balanced budget would look like, incorporating everyone's feedback. Uh, so that's how that calculation occurs. Um, to answer your second question, I will leave, lean on colleagues, um, around, I, I would possibly start with Director Burtig around the impact of a $260,000 decrease to transportation services. Um, and then I would lead on after that, uh, Counselor, or, um, Director Brett Slav to discuss the recreation piece.
I'd really like to hear those answers.
Mr. Burtig?
Yes, yes, through the Chair, um, with respect to the, um, transit de- decrease, uh, what, um, what is being proposed is, is a cut on, um, nighttime hours. Um, and that $260,000 in service, um, would amount to a net benefit to the city of, um, 130,000 because of the, in essence, because of the contribution from BC Transit. So, um, I don't recall how many hours of service is, is cut, but, um, it, it, it is significant.
Thank you, Mr. Brett Slav. I believe you're next.
Yes, um, for a $294,000 decrease, uh, this would include a few different, um, types of options uh, that would be required in order to decrease it by that much. These could include items, uh, such as, uh, uh, we could close down our fitness facilities, um, uh, as far as the gym, uh, goes. Uh, those numbers are being worked on actually right now. I don't know the exact number of that. Um, there is an option, uh, that we could do is, is, uh, proactively decommissioning our pool, uh, prior to, uh, coming to a, uh, some sort of, uh, uh, worst-case scenario, um, uh, not waiting for that to happen, but prematurely decommissioning it, uh, could result in, uh, a more, slightly more than a $294,000, uh, decrease, um, year by year. We would probably be looking at a closer to $400,000 decrease year by year. Um, another option that, uh, would be possible, uh, um, on that, I'm just reviewing my notes. Just one moment, please.
I'll just interject.
I've just seemed to lost my notes. My, my, somehow my, my programs are closing down on me. I'm gonna have to take a couple of minutes to reopen my programs here. I apologize.
Thank you, Director Brett Slav. I'll just check in with, um, CFO Denniston. I know, um, that some of the options for, uh, budget reduction will come at February 27th and so I don't know if, if, um, if, how these numbers might decrease were a part of planning for tonight or, or if you could, I, I see you, Counselor Dout. Go ahead, Mr. Denniston.
Thank you, through the Chair, um, exactly. So, uh, where we're at in the process with budget engagement is, this is, um, opinions from the public to council. So for this report, staff wouldn't have done the rigor to put into an actual service changes what these dollars would reflect because we don't have that direction from council. It's simply to advise council. However, the discussion we were just having is, is a fair discussion from a very high level. I would just anticipate that, um, just to preface, uh, these are very high-level estimates at this point because the direction hasn't been given. We're simply passing on the, the public's feedback. forthcoming is the February 27th draft two and we have already received direction to provide options to reduce the increase to 5%. So many of these, um, services, uh, service changes, uh, will be presented on the 27th in more detail. Uh, but at this point, it is sometimes helpful to have some general context. So for example, protective services of a $245,000 decrease, that's about a police officer or an RCMP officer. Keeping in mind, that also is their cost of their equipment and their gear, um, those sort of things. So if that provides some general context, uh, to help, um, best reflect this survey, um, we're happy to provide that general, general information. Um, environment, environmental development, you know, that's, you know, a staff person. And environmental and public health, that's quite, quite a small decrease of 19,000. So I think the directors have, um, been able to give a high-level idea for general context, but I wouldn't, uh, want to go into too much more detail at this point until council provided direction to staff to actually come up with scenarios. And like I said, that is in the works for the 27th already.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Dout, want to continue on your turn?
I, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
I want to clarify why I asked the question. At, in her initial comments, the CFO was suggesting that there were some items in here that council might want to take as recommendations going forward. And I wanted to be perfectly clear, if council intended to make requisite recommendations on the strength of the figures that are in here, particularly on figure 1E, I wanted to know what we were talking about. Protective services, for example, includes police, fire, bylaws, number of places. You know, I know one firefighter is $150,000 and I don't know if the city needs more or fewer firefighters. But I think we need to know the impacts if we're going to make recommendations. Personally, I wouldn't be making any recommendations on the strength of the survey numbers. Myself, I'd be waiting until we see all of the options fully fleshed out from the staff at our later meeting in February.
All right, uh, Counselor Almeida, any questions for you?
Uh, thank you, Chair, just a simple one for the CFO. Um, while I know the report is done in terms of the simulation survey and I appreciate all of the community for, um, submitting their answers. I was curious, I guess, for those that might have missed the survey, uh, is an opportunity still there? Regardless if it comes, the information comes to council directly, but is the opportunity still there for members of the public to, uh, play with the survey on the city website if they chose to?
Uh, through the Chair, we did close it down so that we were, um, following up on that, that clear cutoff that was part of the, the schedule. However, council could direct for the survey to be reopened and staff could promote it and encourage, uh, further feedback. Uh, we wouldn't be able to guarantee that feedback would reach council in time to be part of February 27th draft two, of course, but, um, should council wish, that motion could be made and we could include any further feedback we receive between now and a couple of weeks from now when we finalize draft two. So to answer your question, no, it's not available, but it would be an option to reopen should council wish.
You.
Thank you. Mayor Wasno?
Thank you. Uh, through the Chair, we have three ratepayers association that have been very active and represent a total number of members, which is probably at least three times the number that have applied for the survey. Have you looked at bringing together the results of the input from those three ratepayers group and put it into results that we can appreciate? And put it into results so that we can appreciate the, uh, the weight that might be given on those?
Uh, through the Chair, I, I apologize, you cut out a little bit there, but did I understand the question to be, did we reach out to the ratepayer societies to encourage them to fill out the survey?
Uh, no, the question was, I've seen correspondence from the ratepayers association on the 2025 budget. Have you been access, have you had access to that feedback? And have you reflected it in your survey?
Uh, through the Chair, we, that feedback has not been included in these budget results. We would be able to include it in the appendix as part of the comments. However, it is already published its correspondence online, so that's why we haven't duplicated that record. Uh, but should we receive direction, we could, you know, flag that correspondence as it comes in and have a final appendix here with all that correspondence. It wouldn't be included in these numbers here. This specifically has to be filled out on the online survey, because it's increasing and decreasing, uh, specific numbers and it must balance. But comments are something that we can always include as further appendix in our engagement summary report, uh, should council provide that direction.
Thank you.
Counselor Selfcott, any questions? I see your hand, Counselor Dow.
Uh, thank you, and thank you CFO for this report. Uh, I'm interested, since 1.1% of the population's response does not rec- represent a statistically valid response, what percentage at a minimum would be considered a statistically valid response?
Um, through the Chair, may I request that Ms. Paulson, as an expert planner in her previous career, um, provide further information on that? Um, she is an expert in this area. I do know we would need to hire a company to, to get to a statistically significant result, so that would be quite an undertaking and a cost. But I'll, I'll, uh, request Ms. Paulson, um, add to that, please, and thank you so much.
CFO Paulson?
Okay, through the Chair, I'm very flattered I've been called an expert in statistically valid. The, wha- what has been done for independent statistically valid surveys has been, uh, mail out surveys that are done through a company. And so you guarantee, um, the challenge with anything online is, I can get a group of all my friends and 100 of us can fill out the survey, and it is, can skew it. And so to do statistically valid in a way that both council can rely on and not be seen as being influenced by staff or any one group, you would be engaging, um, one of the polling type companies. They would put together a series of questions, and then they would make sure that the surveys were distributed. And then, in order to ensure that you had good representation across neighborhoods, if you saw, for example, Townsite had a low response rate, they would then send out more to the Townsite addresses. So, um, there's two reasons why we wouldn't say this is statistically valid. One is even if the percentages were higher, again, you're not doing a distribution that's independent, uh, in a way that a company would do. So I hope that helps. I know I haven't given you an, an exact number, and I'm sure I can look up and find what that is. But it's a methodology that is as important as the percentage number. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, and we'll go on to round two of questions with those that have them. I see Counselor Dow and Counselor Elliott.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say thank you for the open house, uh, that the city had. I attended it, I thought it was very useful. And I saw actually three, at least three of the leaders of the different ratepayer society at that open house. I talked to every one of them. I've talked to them in other cases, I've also talked to, of course, one uh, of the ratepayers, uh, quite a few times over city budget issues. And I appreciate that input, and I, I think they're very coac- proactive in, uh, making their feelings known, uh, for those that they actually do represent, and I appreciate that.
Counselor Dow, do you have a question? We're still on questions.
You know, uh, I would say, I would like to ask, uh, staff how they interpret the some, the 200 and some comments that they've gotten. I've read all of them. Many of them are contradictory to each other, and, uh, pretty hard to try to pick what a majority of the people might be asking for, especially when you consider how deep the understanding is of the city finances. But how would you try to go about, um, moving from all of those comments to a common feeling of what people want?
CFO Dennison?
Uh, thank you, yes, uh, through the Chair. Having read through them and discussed with the corporate officer, you know, is it appropriate for staff to distill the public comments? Um, and beyond categorizing them, it was thought that any sort of staff summary would appear as though to include a staff bias, which we wanted to be careful of. So other than categorizing them to group them, uh, which hopefully helps in summarizing, you know, where the majority of respondents had comments and concerns, uh, staff wouldn't provide a summary of, of those comments.
Could I answer your question, Counselor Dow? That's an answer.
Yes, it does.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott, then Counselor Selfcott.
Thanks, so I just wanted to maybe, I guess, seek clarification on my understanding of, um, of, uh, this report. The, uh, changes that are reflected in the, in the graph are changes from the draft one scenario, which was the scenario that, um, basis service levels on, on the same as last year. So draft one was what was required to, to keep our service levels the same. Um, and the recommendations where people from the community balanced the budget and came up with an average of those numbers that are in the chart are based on the draft one. And we have draft two coming out, which may address options for reducing down to 5% uh, from the draft one. Is that correct?
Through the Chair to Counselor Elliott, that is correct, exactly. Um, council has already given direction to provide options to decrease the property tax increase to 5%. So one observation I can give on the responses is that, um, the responses, we're looking at bringing the increase down to, I think, 6.9%. And since council has already provided direction to provide options to bring that further to 5%, that is one sort of data point I could point to, to suggest that the direction, um, has already been reflected for draft two.
Great, and then, um, the comment around the statistical validity. Um, I understand we were focusing on, um, um, trying to remove any kind of bias through the process of collecting, um, having it be more truly random, uh, not, no, um, so there's what's called a response bias, like people who respond voluntarily in a wide open survey can, can skew the results over folks who may not have had access to you or read it or been aware of. And, and so when you have somebody go out and target a truly random sample, that would be considered more representative. I think that's what I heard and was trying to clarify that, if I was right about that.
Through the Chair, that would be correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other second round questions before we get into discussion? Counselor, oh yeah, Counselor Selfcott, I had you down.
Thank you, I appreciated the previous answer regarding, um, statistically valid samples. And it reminds me that I did do some research in that regard, because we've been, we sometimes receive, uh, promotions that tar- that aim at that. But my question is, if we were to consider, uh, that kind of, uh, data collection, how much has staff by any chance ever looked into how much that would cost us? Uh, I realize that that would be quite a departure from what we've done for at least five years now. But I'm just wondering if, uh, just, I just, is there an idea of how much that might cost us?
Uh, through the Chair, costs can range depending on whether you want, if you were doing, uh, we're a smaller city, a small mail out, so a budget around 30,000 would cover and possibly even less than that. Now, one of the things I would suggest is your community's priorities that they're playing with budget on. One opportunity you have through a review of your city plan is to do a statistically valid survey that then shows you what's important to the community. You then in turn allocate budget based on what your governance decisions are related to that input. And so it, cause it does take time to do that. And with our, the period of time, uh, that budgets are done, it's not something, it could be done, but it might be something that you want to do well before you even start the budget process. It is what I'm saying, thank you.
All right, are we done with questions of clarity? All right, um, let's move into discussion, um, there, um, we, there's, the, the floor is open for motions tonight, there is a draft wording. Uh, I know I've got something and others might as well, but let's open the floor for discussion and see if we can get to a place where, um, there might be motions to debate. All right, I'll start with my motion then. I did send it to staff, um, and it's, it's kinda long. Oh, Counselor Dow, I see your hand up, is that still from last time, or do you have a new question or a comment?
No, it's, uh, left up because I didn't take it down, I'll do that right now.
All right, uh, I'll look for Deputy Corporate Officer Walls. Get my motion up there, maybe, I've sent it to email, I'll start reading it now. Um, that the committee recommends staff include the following changes as options to consider in relation to draft two of the City of Powell River, 2025 to 2029, financial plan bylaw number 2751 for further consideration. Only maintain one sheet of ice at the rec complex. Close the pool at non-peak times, in brackets, hours, days of week, times of year. Remove the unfilled social planner position. Lease city-owned light industrial lands around the airport. Cease Sangabas operations until an on-demand option is supported by B C Transit. Divest the sports hall of fame to a nonprofit society. Update the community partnership policy section on permissive tax exemptions to request application by lot as opposed to by organization, and only provide exemptions to lots with uses that align with council priorities. Update the community partnership policy to not cover permissive tax exemptions for non-city fees and taxes. Shift grants in kind to a discounted rate for community groups. Reduce road sweeping frequency. Merge engine, engineering-related development services with planning. Put parking meters on Marine Ave. Introduce city resident slash non-resident rates at the recreation complex for all programming. Reduce R C M P officer levels by one. Withdraw from optional National Fire Protection Association standards. Reduce park mowing frequency. Reduce street lighting by 40%. Develop a city-owned B C hydro clean energy acquisition process, uh, project with a 25-year electricity purchase agreement. Defer the communications public engagement strategy until 2028. Remove the undefined social cohesion project. Defer the community cultural plan until grant funding is found. Do not do a 50th anniversary celebration for the complex. Is there a seconder?
A second for conversations.
Uh, thank you, uh, Counselor Almeida. Um, so my rationale for this is, uh, I, I know that staffer will be working to provide us options to get to 5% tax increase. Um, there's certain things that, um, I, uh, hope to see in there. When I make this list, it's not because I necessarily, uh, would vote for them, but I want more information on them, and I want them to be options to consider when staff come back to us. We haven't given staff any direction on what specifically to bring back when it comes to 5% increases. Um, some of these come from options provided last year. Some of them come up from ideas provided in the, um, the resident survey. Um, some of them come up in discussions that we've had on council before. And so, um, these are not meant to be items that I believe we will do, but it's very clear in the motion, I want staff, uh, my intention is for staff to include these changes as options to consider in relation to draft two. And it would mean that we'd be able to debate these and whether to include them or not include them. Some of them may not actually result in cost savings, um, uh, at all. Uh, some of them might, some of them obviously have implications beyond costs that we need to consider. Um, but I would like to be able to consider them, and, uh, this motion is intended to allow us to do that. Any further discussion, Counselor Elliott?
Oh, thank you for the motion and the, the thought behind it. Um, I can see that you put some thought into it. My preference would be to not approve this motion at this time. I fear, I think that we've already given direction for staff to come back with a comprehensive suite of ideas without steering them for a reason. And it now seems late in the day that we might be providing some specific direction without a comprehensive, uh, discussion around that. My fear is, is that we direct attention into specific things that may not be actually reducing costs, but using up staff time to explain all of it. So I think we have expert directors in each of the departments that can target where they think the best places are. And I'd be interested to see, without steering that, um, recommend, without steering the recommendations back from staff about where they see those best coming to the 5% mark that we asked them to do. And we've already had this, um, engagement, which they also have seen, and many of the letters from, from the community. And they will have seen your interest in these just by the proposed motion. My preference would be to say no at this time to this motion, and see what comes back from staff at the draft two time.
Thank you, Counselor Elliott, Counselor Dow.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping there might be more hands up to speak to this, uh, before it got to be my turn, but I didn't wanna miss it. So I tend to agree with Counselor Elliott. I think we've already asked staff to come back with quite a wide variety of options for us in draft two. And I think we're gonna have our work cut out for us as a staff, just to go through and sort out all of those options, the different things that, uh, the C A, the CFO talked about earlier in her report, like all of the recommendations for options that have already been made. And, uh, I don't see adding an extensive list to that, some of which each one of us might agree with or disagree with, to just, and it would just make life more complicated. All of these, all of these suggestions basically have come up one place or another in the community engagement. And I would like to get to the point where we're actually talking about draft two and, uh, you know, get on with the details of what we wanna do. And, uh, I'll just leave it at that. So I don't think we should pass this motion now. I think we've got what we need to go ahead and get to the next couple of weeks and have our discussion on draft two. I wish it was coming a lot earlier in the year than it is, but it's taken us this long to get there, and, uh, it'll take us, uh, as long as it takes to get finished.
Thank you, Counselor Dow, other comments? Uh, Counselor Selfcott, then Mayor Wasno. Oh, Mayor Wasno, then Counselor Selfcott.
Um, I will vote against this, uh, motion. Um, and I agree with the rationale put forward by Counselor Elliott.
All right, Counselor Selfcott?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I would love to know all the answers to all, all the questions that are associated here, but, um, probably about half of them have come up during previous time that I've sat at this table, and have involved sufficient discussion to assure me that this represents a really large amount of work to actually, uh, answer. So as much as I would like to support this, I really can't support giving that much work to staff at this point either. And I agree with Counselor Elliott's rationale, trusting staff to bring us back what they will, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Almeida, and then Counselor Palm.
Thank you, Chair. Um, based on the previous four comments, my comments are relatively moot anyways, it seems. Um, as we already have an idea where this vote's gonna go. But I appreciate Counselor Isaacson bringing this forward, and, uh, regardless of whether this motion passes or not, staff have had a chance to see it anyways. I imagine most of these things they've already probably looked at, some of them we looked at last year. And, uh, so I imagine many of them, uh, will already be on, um, recommendations potentially for draft two. Uh, so I think, um, So I think we'll still be having this conversation regardless if this motion doesn't pass or not. And if it doesn't pass, then council can always refer to this list later on in the minutes if we want to be a little bit more specific.
Thank you, Counselor Almeida. Counselor Palm?
Thank you, Chair. I will reiterate the same con that comment that was previously made, and that is I appreciate the work that you've put into this and the thought behind it. There are numerous budgetary items that we can refer to. I am really looking forward to working with the input we have received from our survey, which is quite extensive, combined with the expertise of our staff and their various departments who come forward there with their recommendations, which I will ruse. And we will be talking about on the 27th of this month. So I like to leave that door open so that we can get staff input and expertise into the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Palm. I have a feeling where this is going to go. That's fine. My intention was I don't think this list would get us even close to 5% possibly. But I know sometimes the recommendations or the options that that staff provide can feel political in nature. And so my intention and part of this was to take that political weight off them so that so that it's clear that the direction to include those items come from council. Some of these are not so political, like folks have mentioned have come up previous, but willing to test the will of council on this. Any final comments before call of vote? All right, all in favor?
Nope, I'm not.
Any opposed? Okay, motion fails. And any other motions to direct staff leading up to draft two of the budget? All right, we will, oh, Counselor Palm?
Just have to make my one comment that I were allowed to make previously in terms of the survey input. And that is, you know, even though it's only 1.1%, it's probably a lot higher than it has been in the past with engaged citizens that are aware of what's going on in the city. So I appreciate all the input and I just want to make the point that, you know, when it comes to priorities, the citizens have it right in regard to the survey, which are focusing on taxation, reduction and relief, and sticking to what the community charter points out that should be our task, which is water, sewer, roads, and health of our citizens and safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to community engagement reports. And maybe I'll actually check in with council. I see that our next delegation is present in the room. And I'm wondering if if council would have unanimous consent to switch items 4.2 and 5.1 so that the delegation is able to speak now. All right, I see thumbs up. So I'd like to welcome the delegation African and Afro-Caribbean Association of Kathet Regarding Black History Month Celebration. So welcome and come up to the microphone here and I'll give you some details once you're up here. So feel free to introduce yourself. You have up to 10 minutes. You don't have to include use the whole 10 minutes. And it might feel weird. We're just going to sit here and look at you while you talk. And when you're done, we may have questions for you or a response of some kind. So thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you so much. I'll be looking at the time.
I will. I'll let you make sure that you speak into the microphone because we do have people who listen online. And yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. And the Honorable Mayor and members of the council and guests that are here, residents of Port River. I have with me here Charles Obinbe and Sheila Gottsin. Sheila happens to be my daughter and we are here to represent the African and Afro-Caribbean Association of Kathet. And I am the secretary. My name is Gottsin Akideno. My full name is I am the secretary of the association. And I want to begin by expressing sincere thanks to the council for the support that we have received from the beginning, from last year, when we put ourselves together, when we started this association. We have been, we have received so much support and we are so encouraged by the support. We can see that your commitment to our cause and the values of diversity and equity and inclusion in this community is really encouraging and it's making a lot of difference in our lives. And we stand here before you today to extend a warm invitation to everyone of you to join us for the Black History Month Celebration 2025 edition. This happens to be the second edition and it will take place on the 15th, February 15, 2025 at 12:00 PM. The venue is Dwight Hall. It's 6274 Walnut Street, Port River, B C. So it's going to be an annual event and the aim is to honor the remarkable contribution of black individuals in this community and immigrants, other immigrants as well. The team is of this year's event is honoring the past and inspiring the future. And we will be emphasizing on resilience, on culture and heritage of black communities and other achievements so far. So this year's events will feature live African music performances, dance and fashion showcasing. There's going to be a keynote speaker. His name is Dr. Charles Quist Adadi. And there's going to be a photography exhibition highlighting the rich history and culture of the black race. There will be a refreshment and screening movie. We are also receiving support from the Patricia Theater. Additionally, prior to the 15th, prior to February 15th, we also plan to host a financial literacy program for immigrants because a lot of immigrants find it difficult to figure out certain things and make very serious financial decisions when they migrate to Canada. So we want to use this opportunity to enlighten them and we are receiving support also from the First Credit Union. The event, the main event on the 15th is is free for everyone. There will be free food as well for our guests. There will be no ticket sales. And however, we hope to receive donations, supports from volunteers and other partners to bring this event to life. So we will be deeply honored to have you join us for this significant occasion. And your presence will help reinforce the values of inclusivity and support for diverse communities in Port River. We are grateful. I will conclude again by saying we are grateful, we continue to be grateful for your support and we hope to see everyone of you there.
Thank you, Mr. Akideno. We've got some comments or questions from council. Start with Counselor Almeida, then Mayor Wasno, and then Mayor Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for making it out today. I was glad to hear that you can make it on the agenda. I've got it on my calendar. Enjoyed the event last year. Glad to hear that you have been able to acquire and get access to a larger facility as you were bursting at the seams at the Carlson Club last year and Dwight Hall will be very fitting. So encourage everyone in the community if they can make it out. It was a great showing last year from the community and from your organization. And I look forward to another good one next week.
We're grateful.
Mayor Wasno?
Thank you very much. Counselor Almeida read my mind because as soon as you said that you found Dwight Hall, I thought the same thing. It was so much good. It happened last year. I'm sure all the neighbors in the various communities of the people that attended on their list to be there this year. So thank you for your initiatives and look forward to seeing you at Dwight Hall.
Thank you.
Counselor Southcott?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you so much for coming and inviting us. I attended last year and I I didn't, I wasn't able to stay for the whole celebration. So I'm really looking to be forward to being there for the whole celebration this coming week. I do have a question. I kind of hate to ask it at this point, but I think it's highly relevant. Very recently, we've received news that federal funding for immigrant services has been cut back brutally here, like by 85%. And I wonder if I think many of us find that to be devastating. I I wonder if you have considered that and you have considered any action that your organization might take or if you can offer any thoughts on on that, that our community might be able to support, find a way to support. I don't know what, but I've been really wondering what to do about that.
What we are going to do is that we will raise it up in our board meetings and hopefully we will address it. And when we come up with a position, we will communicate that to the council.
Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, delegates. I have a question about community members interested in coming. Should they bring any money? Should they let you know ahead of time or do they just show up?
Yeah, we actually want to have fun. And at the same time, we will not deny the fact that we need support. However, it's we're not going to tax anyone. What this means is that if if people are attending and they are not coming with any amount of money, it's we're happy to receive everyone. But if we receive donations too, if we show, they show up with donations too, we'll be happy as well.
So donations would be appropriate?
Yes, it will be appropriate.
Thank you so much. And I was away out of town last year and I am home this time, so I do intend to come.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming today and for the warm invitation. I look forward to seeing you there. I know I've already responded and you have a warm response from council. So I look forward and best wishes. Thank you for coming today.
I'm sorry, I I omitted a very vital information.
Oh, okay.
During when we put out the information about the event, we, the financial literacy program was supposed to hold at the Port River Library. But somehow we, some things happened behind us, but we have moved it now to the First Credit Union. There's a place there and that's where it's going to be holding. But hopefully before the end of tomorrow, the information will be disseminated and everybody will be aware.
So I know at the library, there is a First Credit Union Community Room. And so is it at the the First Credit Union Room at the library or is it at the credit?
At the First Credit Union. One at the library, we couldn't secure that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you for that clarity. Counselor Almeida?
When you're disseminating the information and the clarification, if you can make sure to include the city info email.
Yeah.
I already had it on my notes to mention the event on Thursday's meeting in our announcement section. So want to make sure that we provide the correct information to the community that's watching the council meeting on Thursday as well.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thank you.
And I, we are deeply encouraged by your actions and we hope that immigrants will that immigrants will benefit from this organization.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for coming. All right, on to item 4.2, community engagement reports. Who hasn't started in a while? Let's start this time with Counselor Southcott and we'll go in circle from here. Put you on the spot.
Yeah, I'd like to start with mentioning an event that the Westview Rapier Society put on on the 22nd up at the Senior Center in Cranbury. It was advertised as being a talk about drip, mostly. The first three quarters or more of that talk, which was offered by a retired lawyer who represents the Pender Harbor Area Residents Association, was about the provincial government stock management plan. Finally, in the last few minutes, there was an inclusion of the how drip affects that and some concerning observations. So there's an awful lot in flux. That was my observation. It was a very the presenter was very studied and a really knowledgeable man. He answered questions. It's fascinating to see someone who has such a deep insight into how the changes in our society are proceeding, particularly around drip. But very interesting to see, to perceive the possibility of of how lateral communications in our communities could possibly circumvent some really expensive consequences. Anyway, I won't say anymore about that, but it was just really a fascinating talk. Two more a little bit later in the week. One was by the Kathet Climate Alliance and it was deliberately to bring together, it was also in the senior center, it was to bring together organizations that have any related concerns whatsoever. And there were a slew of organizations there. I would say 15 or so represented in that room or more. I did scribble down notes, but it was quite a number, all really concerned with all of the different elements of impact to climate, but that wasn't really the central theme that I found. I found a coming together of organizations looking for a way forward in, as I see it anyway, community resilience. And then another one, two days later, was the A G M and General Meeting of the Kathet Community Voices, which is a reincarnation of a group that I was actually associated with before I became a city councillor. So that goes back a few years now. At that time, this group brought a number of pretty informed speakers into this community and did some really great work, I felt. And it seems to be headed in that direction, but the theme really was bringing other local groups together in whose concerns for community are consistent. And then on Friday, our Housing Social, I, it was held in Dwight Hall. I felt was a huge success. For me personally, it stimulated all sorts of thinking that relate to my own life and what I'm planning to do with my own house and right up to possibilities for this community. And it felt like people really got an awful lot out of that event. So, oh, yeah. And then one final thing, this morning while I was helping a neighbor shovel the driveway of another neighbor, we saw a city truck go by and was helping with a little traffic problem down at the corner. And as they were coming down the block, they got plastered by three eight or 10-year-old boys from a higher property with snowballs. They drove a few more feet and then backed up and leaped out and had a big snowball fight with these guys. And I just thought, what an amazing thing, you know, here's guys working for the community who are just so into engaging with the community. And I thought that was such good work. So they were all having fun and it, you know, lasted about a minute and then they carried on. But I just wanted to mention that because yeah, I just thought that was pretty exceptional.
Thank you. Mayor Wasno?
Thank you. I attended the Housing Social and it was an opportunity for myself to see opportunities on how we can collaborate. For example, E I U, their students accommodation is in short supply. So at our table, we're talking about the cities having 160 surplus properties that haven't been developed in need at V I U. Fact that when the students weren't there during the summer, there are good examples in Anima that those units could be rented out to tours to, you know, one of our many festivals that we have during the summer months. So to me, that was an excellent opportunity of bringing together people who know how to make things happen with those that have identified shortages in this community. So I'm really hoping that we will be able to sit down, move forward. There's at least five opportunities for us to collaborate with the other groups that are there, so. And the budget engagement was mentioned. It was a good opportunity to hear one-on-one and in small groups what the public was thinking in terms of our budget process. Thank you.
Counselor Almeida and then Counselor Dout?
Thank you, Chair. As most of the community knows, I was away for the first few weeks of January, so just getting back into the swing of things. But happy to be back. My kids are excited that they didn't miss any snow and getting all the snow out of their system this week. So I did get a chance last week to connect with the tourism board as they had their first as they had their first board meeting of the year. And also attended the Housing Roundtable event that we had last week as well. So one takeaway from my trip is I did go to Mumbai, which of course is a city about 100 times bigger in population than Powell River. But one thing I noticed after two years being on council is you you look at other cities with a different lens and seeing the massive volume of infrastructure projects, both municipal and private that were happening in Mumbai at the same time was just amazing to see. And yeah, so just an interesting tidbit from the trip over there. But yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you. Counsel Dought and Counsel Palm.
Yeah, make sure I get everything working and get close enough to try to be heard. So it was a busy time since the last council meeting. I also, as well as the mayor, attended the Budget Open House, which I found quite a useful event. The room was full for the duration of the event. And as I said earlier, I got to talk to the leaders of most of the Rape Bearers Society in town. Many of the frequent question askers that come to council were there. I had a lot of positive discussions with many people that were there. And I think it was useful in helping people to understand the budget process. So maybe we'll have more of those in the future. On January 25th, I attended the group meeting that Counselor Southcott was talking about earlier. And I saw it as a group of a variety of groups in the city who are interested in social action and social cohesion in the community. A lot of nonprofit societies, a lot of people are dedicating their own personal time, various things, and wanted to find ways to get together to try to maybe be more effective in what they do. It was a useful afternoon. January 26th, I'm going to mention that the Cranberry Hall had an open mic. And if anybody hasn't been to a Cranberry Hall open night thing, they should go for a $5 donation, which they need badly because they haven't got the same tax exemptions as they used to have. You can listen to a night of music by your friends and neighbors. And I'm going to mention Frances and her dad were the highlight of that Sunday night. Also, a man and a gentleman that I'm going to talk to more in the future some time ago had drafted and written a Powell River anthem, which tweaked my interest and I'm going to be talking to him more about that. On January 30th was my first meeting of Lift Homelessness Task Force, which got together. We hammered out the terms of reference, talked about meeting schedules to go forward. And I'm looking forward to getting into working with that to try to basically deal with tasks, trying to do something about mitigating homelessness and the effect of homelessness on the city. Went to the Housing Social on Friday and that was that was a great event. You know, it was a it was kind of a musical chairs thing where we sat at the table and got to move around and talk to different people at the table through a number of 15-minute sessions. Each having a different conversation about different things. It was a great opportunity to meet people who were interested in all kinds of different aspects of housing. And I just pointed out, want to point out, it gave B C housing representatives who were there a great opportunity to sit down and talk to people about supportive housings and their vision of it in a positive atmosphere. And I think that it worked really well. So February 1st started to get cold. And I ended up going to getting an invitation to go and visit the shelter that's being operated by the Kathet Coalition to End Homelessness. I want to make sure I get that right, which is different than the Housing Tax Task Force. But basically, they have found a location to provide a warming shelter for the places for the days when it's below freezing, very cold outside. Previous weekend was the first two nights, Friday and Saturday night. It was open. I think it'll be open again soon for weekend nights. And it gives an opportunity for people to get in out of the cold, get warm, have something to eat, maybe have some social in interaction with other members of the community. There's no sleeping going on there, but it's an effort by volunteers in the community to get together and do something about taking care of people who are freezing in the cold weather. So that's the last week or so. And I expect to be about as busy for the next week or two weeks. So thanks.
Counsel Palm.
Thank you to Chair, just a couple of items. First of all, I attended the Westview Rape Bearers meeting at the Senior Center regarding the harbor situation down the Lower Sunshine Coast. As Counselor Southcott alluded, the gentleman that put on the presentation from there was very well informed, had a lot of information to share. And I have to say, I was quite disappointed to hear that in terms of the communication that that process has gone through. It's a little disappointing to hear how communication is going between the province and those residents. We need to pay close attention to what's coming at us because if they proceed down that road there, it's going to be coming here in short order. Secondly, Harbor Committee meeting is tomorrow night. Been filling questions and making sure we have an agenda for tomorrow night's meeting at 6:30 in the upper chamber here at City Hall. Any residents who want to come out and take part in that discussion are more than welcome. And we'll see you there 6:30 tomorrow night. Today, we've heard numerous counselors talk about the Housing Committee. Unfortunately, I had grandchildren in town and I wasn't going to leave them for that meeting a couple of days ago. But I have to say, it's a little disappointing today to hear from Mr. Barr that has had a proposal on the docket for two years and it's still sitting there. We need to work on not only the proposals that are coming before us, but we also need to deal with the abundance of land that we have in our community to help us out on the taxation front. And lastly, I just want to say thank you to city staff and all of our employees that are working around the clock in this snow and weather condition we have to keep our roads safe, salted and cleared for the vast majority of our citizens. So well done. Keep it up.
Counsel Elliot.
Thank you, Chair. So I attended the Housing Networking Event on January 31st. It was well-attended with a cross-section of folks, including developers and B C Housing. We had folks from Victoria, Lisa Hulps was there. We had co-alignment representatives there. We had some amazing conversations and had come up with an idea of my own. I called it my idea of the day. And I shared my idea of the day and other people shared their ideas of the day. And they all seemed to be fairly proactive concepts. And so I'm hoping we can get to moving some of those along. Went to the Kathet CAT Education Committee on January 31st. And I just wanted to share with everybody that we are going to be releasing monthly newsletters. The first one, I think, came out Monday. And if you want to subscribe to receive those monthly newsletters from the Community Action Team Education Committee, which is talking about stories within the community, news about what the CAT is up to and what we're all about, you can go to the qcat.ca website. And there's a tab called Resources and you click on it. And in in that list of resources, there's an education sub-cat monthly newsletter place you click. And then you say, click here to subscribe. And then you can fill out your name and your email address and you'll receive the monthly newsletter directly to your email for anyone who wants to do that. And that's an effort by the Kathet Community Action Team to be putting more information out monthly to the community. I also attended the Mayor's Forum on behalf of Mayor Wasnow for the B C Fairies Engagement Process. And that was on, when was that? I have a date here. I'm on the wrong page. That's why I can't see it. January 30th. And they they basically had five questions. And the main themes coming out of most of the mayors, including myself, was we needed engagement to be direct and regular and responsive to solutions that are required in our communities. The the type, the tools used, all of the other questions are nice, are usually fine. All of that is fine. The real matter seems to be whether they're hearing us and responding and we're able to solve problems through the engagement process. So accountability around how they respond back with the information we're giving them and how whether they're willing to try new things to solve old problems. The recognition was definitely there that we have shrinking capacity compared to demand in our whole B C Ferry system. Some of the aging infrastructure is a challenge. And trying to use that capacity better to meet the needs of the community requires some new ideas and it requires, you know, a response from B C Fairies to the issues we're bringing forward and the ideas we're bringing forward. And so that was kind of the gist of the conversation that we had with the mayors on that forum.
All right. Thank you. Myself attended a few of the things that other counselors did, the Housing Social and the Kathet Climate Alliance gathering. Wanted to add something about the Housing Social. It was great. You know, we were cross-pollinating depending on where we happened to sit. A theme at one of, at the first table that I sat at was perhaps land that's owned by nonprofit associations who may not be housing associations, but who may serve public, members of the public who would be looking for housing or could otherwise develop land and housing. And so there was, not to put these organizations on the spot, but examples like the Legion and the Cranberry Seniors Center and the French Club came up just in brainstorm. There's no pressure, but as an example of organizations where there's, you know, property in in really excellent locations. And if we're looking long-term in the future, they might be suitable places for housing in serving the populations that they serve. And so there was this desire to perhaps, because we have many organizations who are either burnt out on building housing and are with working boards or maybe who haven't thought of housing and their organization getting into housing, that there needs to be a bit of a like community wraparound encouragement. You know, pick one organization at a time and say, okay, you you want to try to get housing built? Let's gather our resources and support you in doing that. Find out what we learn and move on to the next plot of land. So there was a bit of a yearning around that. I did attend the Youth Community Action Team meeting where I gave a short summary of the budgeting process. And I had a really engaging conversation about issues that will be part of the budget discussion. Youth, as has been brought up previously times on council, transportation is one of the number one issues for youth. And there were concerns of overcrowding on some of the Brooks routes and just how vital it is for transportation for youth to be able to participate in life in this community. They also had really interesting questions about the mill site and more. So they are very engaged in issues that maybe we don't think that are on their radar, but definitely are. So great conversations there. I attended a screening of Notes on Displacement put on by Cinema Politica. And also, there's a local committee serving that's sponsoring a refugee to our community. And so great documentary on the experience of refugees leaving Syria. And there were speakers afterwards representing the the committee supporting refugees, also folks who work with newcomers to this community through the Immigrant Welcome Center, and also someone who themselves is a refugee. So great, quite a quite a large group that attended that one. It was nice to see everyone there. I attended, I got to take a bit of a peek about the possibilities of the Foundry space that will be announced hopefully sometime soon. The Foundry will be a integrated place for youth to access social supports and health services in our community for ages 12 to 24. Foundries exist around the province. And I believe last year it was announced that we would be getting one. It's super exciting. And just giving a heads up, I can't share anything about the the space, but heads up that this community will be on the receiving end of a capital campaign. So they, part of the funding agreement with the province is to make sure that the operation of it is generally covered. But the important work in building out that space to make sure that it can serve their purposes, it's going to require a large investment. And and so we're hoping, obviously, they'll be working on grants and those sorts of things, but hoping for support from this community for those who have capacity to contribute. Capital campaigns are a really important indication of support for something in a community. And I know that supports for youth have been identified as a concern. And 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 investing in this sort of service will help with the long-term impacts of youth not getting services when they need them. And so hopefully, we'll save ourselves down the road. And then finally, I also checked into the Warming Center that was open on Friday and Saturday nights. And so I volunteered until some wee hours in the morning and did jigsaw puzzles and chatted with people and got to get a sense of those who might need that service. And it was really great, great experience getting to be a part of that community. And I hope, I know that, thank you very much, the United Church for being a partner with the Kathet Coalition to End Homelessness and offering that space on Friday and Saturday evenings. There's still an intent to find a a solution for the full week. And I know that they're working hard on making that possible. So hopefully, the coalition has success in that. And that's it for me. Counsel Palm, you have an addition?
Interesting, your comment in regards to the youth center. I had a phone call in that regard this morning. And the citizen was asking questions about funding and what's planned for the center. And I had no answers because this was the first I'd heard about it. Did you just flush out where the funding's coming from and what's being proposed?
So Foundry is provincial funding. I don't know what stream and what ministry in particular it comes from offhand. But it is meant, it's an integrated place for youth to access supports and and health services. And so what happens is, so Foundry, the host organization is Youth and Family. And so they are the main operator, but the intent is for other groups to either co-locate and exist. Youth-serving organizations might co-locate and exist in the same, under the same roof. Or some folks may come in and offer services, you know, for a few hours to have appointments, et cetera, and then leave through their public engagement and their engagement in particular with youth. Some other potential uses of a Foundry space have been identified. So for example, like a youth hangout space, we don't have a dedicated space for that in our community. We have, you know, the mall and the rec complex and the library, but they're, they don't necessarily serve all the needs of young people to to gather. And so, you know, they aim to do that, but that's not necessarily part of the funding agreement. And so that that might need some additional support. And the timeline, I don't want to speak, I know that, I believe on the back, I think they had a full-page ad on the back of Kathet Living this month. And so there's more information there. And there's a couple of details that aren't shared publicly yet, so I don't want to say anymore. Yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
Yep, Counsel Southcott and then Mayor Wasnow.
Thank you. Another question with regard to the Foundry. Are they charitable, like tax receipts?
Oh, that is a great question. I'm, I don't know the answer to that offhand, but you could be, do a quick search to find out if Youth and Family is, yeah.
Think I can answer that.
Mayor Wasnow.
Yes, so Youth and Family is a registered charity, so they can provide tax receipts and that money designated to flow through to Foundry.
Counsel Elliot.
Just to support what Mayor Wasnow is saying, the operator is a is a nonprofit society. The program itself is of, is the operations of it's funded by the province, like a program. So it's not, the capital investment is separate from the operation of a Foundry. And there's different operators in different communities. That's the operator in our community is Youth and Family.
And our community is Youth and Families. And so some of the services that you would have normally had to only receive through Child and Youth Mental Health or the School District for Assessment around special needs and things like that. Mental health services along with, you know, things that are relevant to youth health in general should all be accessible through the Foundry and utilize existing healthcare providers and schedule them rotating through and so forth. I do believe they'll have a pediatrician coming through, a child psychologist, things like that.
So just to clarify, as Mayor Wasno said, yes, they are a nonprofit with registered charitable status. If you go to youthandfamily.ca/donate, there's an option to donate and you can specify, you know, where can we allocate your donation? And one of the options is the Foundry Kathat Capital Build. So that is on their website right now. All right. No, the correspondence is all publicly available on the city website. No reports for decision or unfinished business or news business. So now we are on to questions. I'll start with Press. Mr. Glinsky, any questions today? So no questions from Mr. Glinsky for those in the room. Welcome, come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Kathy Koralek. And just a quick, couple little things. One, I did attend the Housing Networking on, on Friday. Was very interesting and lots of information. And one thing I did learn from that, and I think that'll be an important question and, and direction perhaps we can take in the future, is a lack of cohesiveness between the community organizations. There's this group going over here that has housing and ideas. This one going over here has something else. So there's so many that have suggestions, ideas, and are working towards different housing. But it'll be a group, and I suppose, coming from city council, I would kind of like to know how, well, not kind of, I would like to know how the city will work to develop a cohesive and get people working together to do things, be first.
So I'll look to, have a couple of councillors with their hand up. Councillor Elliott?
So that is also recognized by others. And the networking event was kind of came out of recommendations from a previous thing to try and initiate getting together. And so the, the event itself was intended to generate ideas for how we can better serve the community and get more, get all of our people who are making efforts in housing together to communicate with one another and identify things we can move together on. So the, my thinking is, is that we, we do more of these types of events and we, we plant seeds that grow into something that looks a lot more comprehensive without creating a bureaucratic sort of department within our city. That's my thoughts on that. Not, it doesn't represent everybody's, but mine.
Okay. Councillor Southcott?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that one of our strategic priorities targeted specifically a housing authority. But that is a big, there's a huge question what that would actually look like and what it would do. So this is, the answer to that question could be the answer to your question too.
Well, I think that's good. Being seen all the people that were representing different organizations, whether it's private or different societies, you should have a good group to draw on for that.
Do you have a follow or different question?
Yes, I do. Do students receive bus, bus passes to ride buses, obviously?
I'll direct the question through staff. C E O, Bo Pusing?
Through the chair, my understanding is that they do. Mr. Berteg, perhaps you can explain. And it's not, I'm not sure if it's blanket or if it's reduced fare for the students. So over to Director Berteg. Thank you.
Yeah, through, through the chair, yeah. These, these passes are at a reduced rate for, for students, whether it's elementary school, high school, well, elementary or free, high school students and college students, they, they get it at a reduced rate.
Okay, thank you. And one last observation and question is that only 1.1% of the population completed and returned the surveys for budget. Now, my question is how to make that more available and user-friendly to the population of Powell River? And why I asked that is because there was more than one time that I spoke to people about this survey and I suggested they go online. And I got, I did go online. However, it was so complicated and confusing, I was not able to complete the survey appropriately. And then I asked if they had received or been able to get a hard copy? No, no idea where to get it. Well, I happened to know that one copy was picked up at the complex, taken to city. And there was a bit of confusion resulting from that request to have some printed out. It did eventually happen, but it wasn't an easy process. And then I came in a few days later and asked for some more because I had run into a number of people that hadn't received any notification. I guess how to advertise and get a better, how to communicate better with people that these surveys are available in hard copy as well as online. Now, I commend the staff. I did get several copies printed out. And I will say that I was handing them out before I even left the city hall. So I believe that somehow a better line of communication would be needed. And suggestions in that would be, I'm sure gladly received because I do know how many I handed out in paper. And that probably would result in more responses if we could find a better way to communicate these individuals, to these individuals.
Thank you. I know we do, this is a perpetual challenge. There's some people who often hear about things all the time because they're connected in the right ways. And, and staff do use traditional and social media venues. And sometimes people, you know, timing, don't, don't see those. And so it is a challenge. And it is a desire personally for everyone to, to have an opportunity to, to respond. Councillor Palm?
Through the chair, I appreciate the question on the survey. And I just want to clarify for the public that the results of that survey are online and they can access those through the city website. Is that correct?
Through our agenda. Through the chair, that's correct. And through the chair, we did have copies available at the library and the rec, the complex. And they possibly may have run out. So, and we do also, if somebody phones in, can provide them that as well if they have a challenge accessing or picking that up. So Ms. Dennison, I don't know if you've got anything more to add. We can always do better. But there were definitely hard copies. And we had a few filled out when people came in to talk to council about the budget. So.
So I see CFO Dennison has her hand up.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you so much for your comments and your feedback. We had hard copies available at the library, rec center and city hall. And the great use is we did run out at times and staff were trained on how to print them. I think at times it might have taken one or two minutes, but trying away the pros and cons of not wasting paper and ink. But I do appreciate your patience for staff to go through that process. We found in the past, we did, had very few printed copies returned. So we didn't want to, you know, spend all that money on the print. So yeah, the, the copies were available there and then they were given to city hall at the cutoff and included in the results today. But thank you so much for your feedback. I do note on the online survey and in all of our communication, we advertise that the paper copies are available at those sites. And I think next year we'll go ahead and print some more right off the hot and hope we get the same amount of response or more next year. So appreciate your comments and thank you so much.
Councillor Dought?
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, I've had my hand up for quite a while waiting. So I'm going to be answering a question that was three or four questions back.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
So what I talked about with many people at the Housing Social last Friday was about the city establishing a housing authority. It's not easy to do, but it's not impossible. Other communities do it. The Comox Valley Regional District has just received a report lately that, that I've got a copy of, where they're setting up a housing authority. What it takes is council to get together and make a decision to do that. And then get together, set up a housing authority. It's not too complicated, but there are details to work out. And then use the city's land and make partnerships with people like B C Housing, all of the different nonprofits in town and all of the different construction people in town to try to get something built. And that is a great way to do it, in my view. It's just a matter of getting a majority of people on council who are willing to do that and getting it on the agenda to discuss it and move it forward. I like the idea of having roundtables where we get to talk about all kinds of things, about what we might do in the future. But I also like to try to set things moving to actually do something practical about it. And my own personal opinion is that the city setting up an arms-length housing authority to do that would be a good thing to do. So let's see if we can get something done.
Thank you, Councillor Dought. One thing that I'll add, while the survey may have not worked for everyone, council considers input from a variety of ways. And so all of the emails that we receive as well through info@powleriver.ca is also an opportunity. If people haven't shared their feedback yet or didn't get a chance to respond to the survey, we read everything that we get and would consider those in our deliberations. So that's always an opportunity. Councillor Elliott?
Thank you, Chair. So I remember a few years back when we first came out with the balancing the budget software, we had some folks at the library running little workshops on how to do it. And they had kind of a kiosk at the library set up where people could help folks use it. And that seemed to be pretty popular. And I wondered if maybe in future years we might set up computer kiosks that are labeled budget input in high-traffic areas like in the rec center or the library with staff trained on how to help people do those surveys? Whether that might be a good idea to not only help people learn how to do the survey and they can do it and spread that word around to other people, but to sort of also encourage the online experience as opposed to the paper experience?
Thank you. I think that would be a good idea.
That sounds like a motion to consider bringing forward when we plan the budget for next year.
A seed for staff. I know our CFO is listening. She might think about it. And we could make a motion maybe next, next spring or when we start our next process.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing that. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from members of the gallery today?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Roger Whitaker is my name, citizen of Powell River. And I just want to talk about, or ask a question rather, about the 2025 Five-Year Financial Plan Engagement Results as it was presented in the public binder today. It's, is council aware of how unreadable it is? It's hard enough to read the screen. It's tiny font. This presentation was not readable at all. And I don't know if council was aware of how unreadable it was. That's my question. Do you know that it's unreadable?
I didn't know, no.
Speaking for myself, I was able to read it, but it sounded like it wasn't readable for you. Thank you. Councillor Almeida?
So to specifically answer Mr. Whitaker's question, I haven't looked at the book because I've only looked at the, the package that was online. And my, my one guess would be that the, the document was made probably in a, in a format that didn't line up or the, the dimensions were different for eight not by 11. And so when it was printed, it needed to be printed a different way so that it was better fitting on a page. So that would just be my assumption based on my experience in the, in the printing space. So I apologize for that. But I do know the document online is easier to read or legible at least. So.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Mr. Whitaker, we can provide you with your own printed copy on 11 by 17?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions from the gallery today? Any online? All right. I have a motion to go into a closed meeting because I'm going to read that out. Councillor Southcott?
Move that the committee move into a closed meeting to discuss matters covered by the Community Charter under Sections 91A, personal information about an identifiable individual who holds or is being considered for a position as an officer, employer, or agent of the municipality or another position appointed by the municipality, C, labor relations or other employee relations, and I, the receipt of advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
Second, Councillor Almeida, all in favor? Osteonamously, we are now heading into closed. Thank you, everyone. I'll take a.
Thank you, I saw cards leaving, I figured.
Lisa who is getting involved or if you want to be, have loads of experience.
Jessica is six thirty five.
Thank you, Lisa, if you could, is there a red button that says end broadcast on the little black box in front of you?
Oh, you know what? I can't hear you. Are you upstairs? Okay, yeah, I'll do that right now.